We'll start off this evening with prayer by Councilwoman Sylvia and the pledge by Councilman Williams.
If you'd like to join in prayer, please bow your heads. Father God, we're coming to you today, Father God, asking you, Father God, to bless us, unite us, Father God, nor we asking that you would touch each and every one of us on council and in our city, Father God, nor that council would make direct decisions that affect our citizens in a positive way and that our citizens will also help lead and guide the city. Lord, we asking you these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged and invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Proton Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Ossash.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Seven members present, two absent.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna be apologetic for the building, but we trying to get it ready so it's safe for you to come in here soon. Okay, so with that being said, this is a public meeting. I ask that everyone refrain from booing, clapping, and any obnoxious behavior. I'm guilty, and I know I am, and I apologize, but I need everybody to put their phone on silence, please. Also, these laptops, they like to beaming too. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, we have a few. The contract for the bypass valve improvement project for the water treatment plant was removed from the consent agenda and is pending further review. City offices will be closed next Monday, September 2nd, for the Labor Day holiday. And along with that, trash, recycling, and yard waste pickup next week will be delayed by one day, also due to Labor Day. The splash park will close for the season on September 2nd at 7:00 PM, and daily hours until then are from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Thank you. The purpose of the public, I'd like for all speakers who come up to the mic, you'll be called by a clerk. You have three minutes to present your case. Please, get it all done in those three minutes, please. And the clerk will call you up, and you are to say your name. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Melanie Velasco.
Hello, Councilwoman, how are you?
Melanie Velasco.
Yeah.
Been homeless for a little while. It's not been real, but we can call it adventures, but not really. Anyway, not homeless by any means of my own wrongdoing or anything. My penalty got condemned, and so that's how it goes. Anyway, I really do believe that Saginaw could use little homes. I think it would help a lot of people to have a home of their own. If we ever come down with another pandemic, you know, people would have their own safe little harbor. It's possible if we put the work into it, and we got a lot of open land. Weber Jr. High Area is empty, the old fairgrounds is empty. Those are some prime locations where people could be having their own little home and their own little dwelling. And you know, if you got a home, I'm sure y'all do, which I don't, y'all like coming home. All right, I'd like to come home to a home too, but it happens to be my van with my two cats. And I'm learning a lot. Anyway, let's get back to another subject, bathrooms. The public places like parks and the rail trail, there needs to be more public bathrooms. I went through Hoyt Park, there are bathrooms there, wonderful, absolutely wonderful. Years back, there wasn't any outside of the rescue mission when my sister was staying there, and I said, "Just go ahead and pee your pants, what the heck?" You know, they think you're a pig anyway, so what? Oh! I'm sorry, I didn't mean it, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. Anyway, so anyway, I'm sorry, pee your pants. But anyway, I was willing to help put up some money for a toilet outside there, Johnny on the spot, and it only costs like hundreds of dollars, like for a while. And anyway, I don't know, I guess now the rescue mission lets people come in if they have to use the toilet, which that's wonderful. But my other concerns is I would really think that it would be nice that if Saginaw could, if you have to get more tax money, put in for this glow-in-the-dark lines going down the middle of the road, and Australia has them, they glow in the dark, and everybody can see the lane that they're in. And I know Janice, Davenport over there by Little Caesar's out there, there's a little tricky spot where it's hard to get over. Court in Michigan, there's another area where there's the cars, and then there's, you can't always see the line. And so it'd be nice if we had glow-in-the-dark. Okay, well, thank you very much, sorry I asked more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just learned how last year, I really did. Have a great day.
Our next speaker is Jimmy Carter.
Hi, Jimmy Carter, and I've been before you before. I just wanted to let you know, I come from a river town too. And originally, it's Saint, where the Missouri River, the longest river in North America, and the route that Lewis and Clark took until a woman took him and took him the rest of the way. Why do all long trips have a woman involved? I don't know. But we have less bridges in crossing the Merrimack, the Missouri, the Mississippi, and the Gaskinay in that area than we do here in Saginaw. Saginaw should be the town of bridges, we should celebrate that. And I've been investigating the, our tax situation, how we can juggle the numbers to get rid of the taxes so we can help our commercial venues get filled up. We've got so many far rent in this city, and I've got 10 myself. And I could work harder to fill them up maybe, but the biggest stumbling block is you can't get by the city tax. But the, there are three taxes that the state have that they collect $25 billion. That's billion with a B. I'm sure that they could help us out a little bit to cover our shortfall for the income taxes while we grow out our commercial venues, because we do get 15% of the sales tax back on every 4%, not 6%, but 4%. And I'm sure they could, they would be more than happy to eliminate that top 2% and give us 15% off the full 6%. Of course, the people I've talked to in Michigan seem to think that that's a doable deal. So it's just a matter of juggling some numbers. We can fill up our commercial venues and create wealth and tax revenue for the great city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stacy Hawkins.
My name is Stacy Hawkins, thank you for having me. I regret that I even have to be here. I'm here because my girlfriend was assaulted by her ex-boyfriend and the father of three of her children, and she called 911. Police came out to interview her and investigate. Went to talk to him, he lied about what happened, and rather than come back and investigate what she said or had to respond to his, they arrested her and took her to jail in front of her children. So her children sat there crying. It happened in front of a school where there was security footage that the police could have investigated and asked to see the footage before making an arrest decision. They didn't, they arrested her, took her to jail. I went to the police department, talked to Detective McNabb the next day, asked them to go see the security footage. Also called that night and asked the officer to come back and interview a witness that was eyewitness that saw this happen, saw what happened. The officer refused. All this is detailed in 911 reports and police reports. You've received the information, I emailed you previously, so hoping everyone had a chance to review it or investigates this. I'm looking for my bond money back. I haven't determined whether I'm gonna pursue any additional action for the stress I was under, but she is looking to also mitigate. She doesn't want to speak today because this is an intimidating environment. She already suffering injustice at the hands of public officials, and she's the one that's supposed to follow me, but she's not gonna speak at this point unless she changes her mind. I'm looking for, I think it's $340 that I paid to bond her out. Let me, I forgot to say this, when the prosecution finally saw the evidence, they threw the charges out because the evidence favored her. So she didn't have to go through that 10 months of trauma had they simply investigated. And this apparently is happening too often, because there are two other people who also said they called the police because of a domestic violence situation, and they ended up getting arrested. So there appears to be a pattern of failing to investigate victims' claims to see who actually is telling the truth, and there's a rush to judgment. We know that there's another case in Little Verity, the city of Saginaw, which you already are probably familiar with, as is the police department, where there's a failure to properly investigate, a rush to judgment. So I'm asking you to explore returning my money that I should not have had to pay and to hopefully settle a case with her before she has to bring the case to the court. Shouldn't have to incur the extra expenses. The city should look to alleviate or remedy this trauma that she already suffered, and I'm hoping the council will think about that, talk to individuals that are in a position to make those decisions. Thank you for your time and for your hand.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia McQueen. We will move on to Tori Enkamp.
We need to step still, huh?
Hello, my name is Tori Enkamp, and I like STEM Saturday because I like to make the car and everything else and stuff, like the bridge and stuff and the elevator. I just really like STEM Saturday, and I like, and I also like STEM Saturday because it's a gym, and I like gym time at school, and I think that's it.
Thank you, young man.
Our next speaker is Hurley Coleman III.
Now, that is actually a tough act to follow. Good evening to our mayor, city council members, city manager, all of our city council members, and to those who are in attendance tonight here in the building and also online. I bring you greetings from Saginaw County Community Action, where I serve as the CEO of the agency. My goal tonight was to update you on the progress that we have with our ARPA spending and our intentions. I asked our finance director as well as our teams to give me some updates on where we were, and I'm grateful that we've made some great headway. We've been underway spending our ARPA dollars on the programmatic side with our weatherization and housing, getting homes completed, working through the energy savings and energy efficiency programming. We're also currently rehabbing three homes in the city of Saginaw that are a part of our affordable housing units that will offer low-cost rental assistance to those and give them some great homes to live in. We've also repaired our refrigerator truck, had a lot of damage that we just could not fix. So we're grateful for the ARPA dollars because we got the engine rebuilt, we got the systems rebuilt, the cooling systems is getting fixed, and we're currently going to take it to get the hydraulics fixed so that we can lift it up and down when we got to get products from Flint. We've also worked on the, with the architects, TCFF, to oversee the plans and selection of our general contractor. These plans are ready to go, we have a contractor ready to go. We have a 1,700 square foot storage facility that's ready to break ground. So looking forward to sending out announcements for when the groundbreaking ceremony will take place. We hope to have that completed by November, where we'll have our new food storage units, where we had some dollars from Congressman Dan Keaty for food storage to take all of our units, all of our construction of all of our storage and put it into our new facility. We're excited about that. We also are working on our Genesee parking lot, which is going to start. We've replaced the roof on Genesee, so you see a new roof there. And then we'll begin working on the exterior of the 2824 Perkins. So while we're getting the roof replaced at Perkins, getting the storage, the expanded facility done, we'll be working at the parking lot, ending, and then we'll be putting digital signs out so that we can have a scrolling announcements of what's happening at the agency. So that will be last after all the construction has been done. But we hope to have all this done as well as the entryway. So they're going to redo our entryway as well as put new lights in our arena so that we can actually see what we're doing in there, and then also fix the entryway where people come in that lets us, is a security hazard there for the receptionist. So we want to bring the receptionist out so that we can actually see the front of the building, which should also take place within the construction that we have with our general contractor. So thank you for the dollars, and it's going to great use.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew Gladke. On to Rochelle Laffoon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Moore and city council members, city managers, and the clerk's office. My name is Reverend Rochelle Laffoon, and this summer I had the honor of being a site coordinator of one of the three sites of the Charles L. McNair Freedom School of Saginaw. The Saginaw African Cultural Festival is the fiduciary for Freedom School, and therefore I am here tonight on behalf of its president, Ralph Martin, vice president Alexis Thomas, secretary Janice Moore, treasurer Karen Lawrence Webster, and assistant treasurer John Turner. Freedom School is a national summer school program that engages students K through 12 in a culturally rich way and promotes the joy of reading. We are planning our 2025 to 2026 summer session and will serve 100 scholars K through 8th grade. Our plans for these sessions also include five junior servant leaders in grades 9 through 12, offering enrichment and leadership opportunities. We will serve 100 scholars at sites within the city limits in partnership with Charles L. McNair Booker T. Washington Student Development Foundation, Saginaw Valley State University, Delta College, Michigan State University Extension, and many others. We have several operational needs that will need to be sustained in the future by Michigan education grants and rigorous fundraising efforts, but we need your assistance for our 2025-2026 sessions. Our request includes a $285 per scholarship franchise cost, including books, and training for our site coordinators, servant leaders, and directors. Enrichment and field trips with cultural relevance are cornerstones of Freedom School, and therefore funds will also be used for that purpose. Our six-day training will take place in Knoxville, Tennessee, and we are excited to have 10 college students from Saginaw who attend Saginaw Valley, Delta College, and other college students who are from Saginaw and returning home for the summer. We will also train two site coordinators, a project director, and a volunteer executive director. Freedom School will answer the call to provide summer learning and employment for all of our scholars. We deeply appreciate your past support and look forward to your continued partnership with the Saginaw African Cultural Festival and the Charles McNair Freedom School of Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Casson Gates.
Good evening, everyone, the mayor, council members. My name is Casson Gates, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Saginaw STEM program, some personal insights and reflections, anything you can do to offer support to this great program. I have two daughters that are STEM majors. They were two back-to-back graduates from Michigan State University, they were electrical engineers. Here's an interesting caveat to that, they were the only two black girls in their class. 65,000 students at Michigan State, there was mechanical engineers, chemical engineers, other various, but there was two electrical engineers, ladies, and they were my daughters. Well, here's the point, it's the exposure. And what the STEM program does is exposes students to great opportunities, to be exposed to that information, that resource, and that ability to capitalize on a career that could be enriching to them to help them foster growing economics in their community. So you talk about the STEM program and what it's done. Our son was a recipient of the Saginaw STEM program. It allowed him to experience of a lifetime to travel on a Pacific Coast race line as a solar car participant. He was also a driver in that program. It gave him a leadership role to mentor other students, younger students, in his role. He comes back now, he's a student at Michigan State, also pursuing electrical engineering in his second year. He come back, came back home this summer, and he also worked with the STEM program, facilitating Saturdays with them, working with students to continue to build that. Exposure is the key word here, exposure, having an opportunity to understand what other possibilities exist for them to be a participant of. They also issued him a $2,000 scholarship over his four years as a collegiate student, and exposed him to a wonderful program, it's a pilot program in Detroit called Heroes Alliance. So Heroes Alliance is the pilot program that the STEM program in Saginaw is trying to model after. And if you ever get an opportunity to go and visit that site, it's a multimillion-dollar setup that they have there. It's phenomenal, see, they have their own broadcasting network, the YouTube Media Center, they have welding centers, fabricating centers, and that's where the solar cars are housed, where they do their touring across the country, when they do their racing. It's phenomenal program that Saginaw STEM is monitoring, is piloting after. So I would just encourage you, if you would, when you're considering your resources and allocation, consider Saginaw STEM program, it is a phenomenal program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alexis Thomas.
Greetings to our mayor, our council members, city manager, and clerk's office. My name is Alexis Thomas, I wear a few different hats. I know you guys heard Ms. Reverend Rochelle mention that I'm also the vice president of the Saginaw African Cultural Festival, but I'm here today in the capacity of co-chair for Saginaw STEM's Board of Directors. And we are here looking for your support by way of the ARPA funds, as a few before me have shared the impact of Saginaw STEM's programming for the youth in our community. We're looking to grow our impact by continuing to expose, engage, and inspire our youth in the many opportunities that STEM can afford them. Our STEM Saturday programming and our First Things First After School programs have been come integral to our students here in Saginaw. As Mr. Gates just shared, specifically with the First Things First After School program, these students get an opportunity of a lifetime to travel to Texas with the solar car and race in cross-country race, as well as the Texas Motor Speedway, which allows them to actually build that car, learn all the aspects of really all kinds of mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, and just give them exposure to things that they probably wouldn't have, and offers opportunities and employment that they probably wouldn't have without exposure to all of the things that Saginaw STEM has to offer. So we just implore you, as you go over all of the documentation and information that we've sent to you previously, to please strongly consider supporting Saginaw STEM and the Saginaw African Cultural Festival. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jake Lowensberry.
Thank you for having me, mayor, city council members, everyone else that's joined. I'm here on behalf of Saginaw STEM as well. They've already shared a lot of great things, and the one thing I want to point out is I'm STEM at SBSU, and we do a lot of outreach there. The biggest thing is exposure. So what STEM, or Saginaw STEM does is creates exposure to these students and allows them to see a pathway forward. As we build this community and we want to grow, part of it is having that job market available and getting those kids excited about those careers that are possible right here. And Saginaw STEM does that. So that being said, I just ask that you support the ARPA funds in any type of manner that you can for Saginaw STEM, because this program, we see change right from the beginning. As those students walk in the door, they build confidence, they get excited, and they continue to grow as they move forward and they really decide what's going on. And the last thing I say is, I've seen how exposure works from, I was a teacher at North Middle School, which is no longer, and then I taught in Bridgeport. The lack of exposure, you'd ask a student what they want to do when they grew up, and they'd have one or two items because that's all they'd seen. But then you took students to all of these different events, and I had one young lady that wanted to be a teacher, and that was great, but when she was asked why she wanted to be a teacher, she said, "Well, I want to go to college." And I thought, "There's a lot of things you can do before you go to college," and she just had not seen them. And she didn't want to be a principal because they're mean. So that all being said, she got to experience different STEM events, and now she's going into program because she realized that that was available to her and something that she liked. So it's through these different events, such as the solar car, the STEM Saturdays, that they get to see these different aspects of what the careers are that are available to them in the future, and they're deciding so much younger now. Sixth graders are telling us what they want to do when they grow up. When I was in 11th grade, I still didn't have an idea. So the world's changing, and these kids are changing with it. And I just ask that you support this amazing program that is making those changes for us. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ty Meyer.
Ty Meyer, and mayor, council members, thank you for having me tonight. With me is Tim Ostrom, school leader from Saginaw Covenant Academy, and Dr. Elsa Vera, who's one of the board members that I serve with as the vice president. I'm the board chair currently, and I'm the controller at Garber Automotive Group as well. I appreciate the time this evening and look forward to providing you some information on Saginaw Covenant Academy. Our school serves disengaged students in the dropout population. For many, this is our last chance at a formalized education while still earning a high school diploma, not a GED. We're a year-round school, and we're currently operating out of the converted funeral home on 508 South Washington Avenue. We've been serving the community since 2018. Enrollment at the school last year exceeded 200 students, and this fall we expect to reach 210. We have reverse transferred students back to their original high schools once credits have been obtained and support the relationship with public schools. A couple of things to highlight on the handouts that are in your hands. We meet students where they are. Many of our students enter our doors without any high school credits at all, even though they're 17 or 18 years old. Teachers make personal approach to every student and remove hurdles and build relationships. Some students, as you can see on the chart there, have students of their own, or children of their own. Some are homeless, that's the McKinney-Vento population, and some need specialized education that's fit just for them. Others are working with probation officers. We serve students between the ages of 15 to 22, and special education students up to the age of 26. The ability for us to serve those children over 18 or 19 has been extended us from the state of Michigan. To date, we have had 76 high school graduates. Last year, there were 17 students that walked at our graduation ceremony in front of their family and friends. Of those, 10 were pursuing college in fields like engineering, business, culinary arts, medicine, or nursing. One student was entering the construction field, and another was becoming an auto mechanic. A couple others wanted to go into business with themselves as an entrepreneur. Our school curriculum includes career prep class, and we employ an education and employment coordinator who works with local businesses to design a schedule that works for the employer, the student, and the education opportunity we have. 12 students have been hired since April. We currently have a project bid out from a Saginaw-based construction company for $1.2 million addition onto our building. The project would allow for two large additional classrooms, a couple offices for evaluations and IEPs, as well as additional restrooms, and an individual shower to accommodate our homeless students. There's a map of the school on the back of that. We did originally request ARPA funds in June of 2022, and today we would ask for $300,000. $300,000 towards our project as it's designed. We do have other private donations and some foundational support, however, we believe this amount would put us close enough to move forward with the project as designed. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dante Davis.
Good evening, and council, clerk, and everybody that's in attendance today. My name is Dante Davis, and I'm the founder and executive director of Saginaw STEM. And I just want to express the importance, like Mr. Gates says, of one STEM degree. I just know from my own experience, just because I had grades in math and science, my guidance counselor asked me, "Have I ever heard of engineering?" And I had not, except for the engineer on the choo-choo train, and I didn't want to be that. So he showed me all these different disciplines of different types of engineers, and more importantly, their salaries. So I went down that list like I was at a fancy restaurant, and I find the salary, AKA the price, and I go across, $80,000, nope, I don't want chemistry, electrical, nope, I don't want that one, and I found one for $86,000 a year that said mechanical engineering. And like they said, exposure, exposure, exposure. From there, I asked him, "Hey, if I chose mechanical engineering, can I design and develop and work on cars for my career?" And he says, "Absolutely, and not only that, you'll get to name how much you make for the rest of your life." I was a dumb kid. I believed them. So I went into mechanical engineering. I went to Michigan Tech. He says, "Not if, but when you graduate from here, you'll tell everybody how much you want to make for the rest of your life." So I went to Michigan Tech. I got my degree, and then I handed it to people, "Hey, I want to be paid this much money." And they says, "Okay." For my whole 25-year career, that's how it's gone. So I've worked for Tesla, I've worked for SpaceX, I've worked for the big three. I just moved back here. I quit my career, my engineering career in California, to move back here to do Saginaw STEM full-time, because I know the importance of one STEM degree. My STEM degree changed my mom's life. My STEM degree changed my brother's life. It changed my nieces' and nephews' life. It's changing some of your kids' lives. It's changing these kids' lives. And I've been doing this program, not on my own, but a lot of it on my own, just emptying my bank accounts, because I know the importance of this. That's why I quit. Who leaves LA to come back to Saginaw? Who does that? Nobody. But I know the importance of this, and I know that just if one of these kids gets it, then this is a successful program. And that's all I'm trying to do, is reach one kid, because I used to be them. I used to be Toriyan. I used to be these three triplets right here. That's why when they're here and say, "Hey, why are you doing this for my kids?" Because I used to be them. So that's what we're here for, to ask you to help us continue to do what we're already doing. They've been this Texas two years in a row. We don't have our own solar car. We need to build our own solar car so we can go to Texas on our own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tyree Watson.
Good evening, city council. I'm Tyree Watson. Here with Saginaw STEM. I want to thank Mr. Davis for giving me this opportunity to be here. Saginaw STEM has really helped me get a better understanding of what I want to do in my future. You know, like, I learned a lot of things and gave me opportunities to travel. Like, I went to Texas, did the solar car, and I learned how, I'm learning how to weld and do more stuff with engineering and building on like little motors and like mini bikes, go-karts. I learned how to extend a frame for my go-kart to make it longer and working on more projects. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tyrese Watson.
Good evening, city council. I'm Tyrese Watson, speaking on behalf of my experience at Saginaw STEM. STEM is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, where we have fun, we learn, design, build, and we have STEM Saturdays for youth. Saginaw STEM benefited me by exposing me to different opportunities. For example, I went to Texas to race solar cars, and I'm honored to be in this program. I want to thank Mr. Davis and our sponsors. Yeah, I want to ask that you all keep doing what you're doing so we keep doing what we're doing.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Khalee Swatson.
Hello, I'm Khalee Swatson. Good evening, city council. I'm here at Saginaw STEM. STEM is important to me because it helps a lot of us be able to learn things outside of school, and me to be able to be involved in new experiences. STEM benefits me by opening new opportunities for me and others, and we able, well, be able to take trips and explore new places. Thank you to Mr. Davis for having me, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to Kevin Gregory.
Good evening, council. Good evening, city manager, everyone on this side, usually not up here talking. Me and Reggie will talk offline. He'll always say, "You need to come up here and talk. You need to come up here and talk." It's like, I know y'all, I just talk to you when I see you. So it's good to see you from here. I'm here to support what everyone is saying about STEM Saginaw. I'm kind of like the sounding board for Mr. Davis, and when he was out in LA, he would call me to do this, do this, do that, and I would just do, because that's what engineers do. They design and designate. But I want to talk about, as he mentioned, is the financial impact with the ARPA dollars flowing towards Saginaw STEM. My wife is in the grant-making business, Ruth Mott Foundation, we're having dinner. She says the biggest issue we have with giving out dollars at the foundation is people don't know the difference between when they have an activity, a program, or an organization. And I've watched a bunch of people ask you for lots of money for activities. But what we've seen over the last four or five years is Mr. Davis has cultivated activities into a comprehensive program and an overarching organization, an organization that empowers young people in a financial way. Because one of the things I've lobbied for is that, yes, we expose kids to STEM on Saturday mornings, and that's the thing that everyone sees. Those are the pictures that show up in your social media feed. However, what you don't know is, we pay attention to who's in the audience on Saturdays, and we notice L, and we notice the twins, and we notice our mind, and then we start to recruit them immediately. So they go from participants in our program to the helpers in our program. The program we modeled STEM Saginaw after is based at Xavier University in New Orleans. That program uses college kids. We actually use kids from Thompson Middle School and Saginaw High and other programs, because they would help the kindergartners, the second graders, the Toriyan Kims of the world, who's on the spectrum. But we have kids that know exactly how to deal with them every Saturday so that they enjoy that. What's really neat about that is when you start talking about economic impact for American recovery dollars. It's real funny, because I used to work in the county. With Saginaw STEM, all the important, not important people, it's everyone's important, but we're city residents, we're city taxpayers, we're city property owners. So when the money comes to Saginaw STEM, yes, the exposure and the programming goes, but our kids, those are city residents. Their families, those are city residents. Our executive director and board, those are city residents. Sometimes, when we grant make to city organizations, everyone's name that ends up on the check isn't a city resident. It goes to Freeland. It goes to other cities where they reside and deposit and spend those funds. But with Saginaw STEM, we're recruiting, we're cultivating, we're developing, we're helping them get to college, through college, and then looping them back into our process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Armand Conley.
Good evening, members of the city council, Saginaw City Council. I'm speaking to express, oh, my name is Armand, sorry. I'm speaking to express my strong support for the funding of Saginaw STEM program. As a community deeply invested into the future of our youth, it is crucial that we prioritize educational, that foster innovation, critical thinking, and a passion for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The Saginaw STEM program has constantly demonstrated its effectiveness in providing students with the skills and knowledge necessary to excel in today's rapidly evolving technologically landscapes. By offering hands-on learning experience, mentorship opportunities, the program not only enhances academic performance, but also inspires students to pursue careers in STEM field. After all, the program plays a vital role in bridging the educational gap within our community due to the pandemic. It ensures that students from all backgrounds have the opportunity to explore, develop, and develop their potential in STEM, thereby promoting diversity and inclusion in these critical fields. This in turn contributes to the overall economic growth and competitiveness of our region. Investing into Saginaw STEM program is an investment in our community's future. It equips our young people with the tools they need to succeed in a technology-driven world, and fosters a culture of innovation will benefit our society for generations to come. I urge the Saginaw council to continue its support for this invaluable program and ensures it will receive the funding necessary to thrive. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is V. Michael Sims.
Hello, I'm V. Sims, and I go to STEM Saturday almost every Saturday because I love to build stuff and learn about STEM math and science. And my favorite thing was to build a traffic light, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Al Sims.
My name is Al Sims, and I go to STEM Saturday. I really like going because it's like, it's fun and we learn, and I use the skills that I learn in STEM Saturday in school to get ahead. And it's, and they always provide us with pizza at the end.
Here are the case study remarks of council.
Y'all are tough act to follow. We're going to start tonight, council members, three minutes. We're going to start tonight with Councilman Williams.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Glad everyone could come out tonight, and thank you to all of our speakers. Couple things I'd like to address. I think it's really important, again, and I've said this before, for citizens to understand the role of council and also your city government. It's fine if you want to come and you want to talk about any department within the city so you can be heard, that's fine, but if you expect for council to do something, we don't have power over city employees, over city departments. We have one employee, which is our city manager. So again, if you want to come and be heard, that is fine. That is your right. But if you're coming to be heard and expect something to be done by council to that specific department, it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. And I wish the man that was here earlier was still here, but hopefully he'll see it on YouTube. But besides that, Brother Davis, you definitely sparked attention tonight. This is, this was a great presentation. I want to say that I believe that the STEM program is a strong program. I'm going to say I believe it's a strong program simply because of Ms. Thomas, Mr. Gregory, Mr. Gates. Knowing these people, if you're in Saginaw, you know these people. You know these people are people of high integrity and character. So for them to vouch for and be a part of a program like this, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I also want to, before my, oh, still got a little bit of time. Okay, hold on, because this is something I'm going to be attending, Mr. Gates. Grief and loss for men. Look at this, me trying to read without my glasses. Wednesdays, 5:30 to 7:00 PM, September 11th, 18th to 25th, and October 2nd and 9th. And this is being put on by Mr. Gates' organization, and he is a clinical mental health therapist. That is something I think is very important. It's very important. I plan on being there, because this has been a tough year, and that's something that I need. So thank you all. Thank you all for coming out, and again, beautiful presentation and representation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank all the citizens who's coming out today and expressing your thoughts from the city council today, and especially the STEM, STEM children and young teenagers. As a board member of Saginaw STEM, I'm really happy to see you guys here. You know, what better thing can we do as a mentor our children to become engineers and technicians and behalf of those trades? I have a son that's a master plumber. I went to school first to be a pipe fitter, and we ended up going to school together. Next thing I know, he got a master, almost has a master's degree, and he's a master plumber. And his kids kind of tease me sometimes, because they say, "Pops, you're just a pipe fitter, and pops is a master plumber." So we got a thing going around the house with that, but my, one of my grandchild, grandchildren went to Howard University for a year, and he come back home and said he's not going to go back to second year because he's going to be ending up owing them $100,000 per year, and he said he didn't like that. So you know what he's doing now. He's assisting his father as a pipe fitter. So now I get to get on him about he don't even have a journeyman card yet. It's really beautiful to have three generations in your family to do something like that. My son is a pipe fitter at Chrysler, and he works there 18 hours a day, and then he has his other business where he, his business is called iPlum, and now he's hired his son to come and work for him. So I'm really happy about us extending the trade to our family like that. And I want all these children to know here that you guys can do the same thing, become your own boss within any trade you want to do. I had the opportunity to teach some of my kids in my neighborhood about pipe fitting and electricity. I got a small board that's two by two, and I had the kids use different sized pipe to run them together, and we even ran some nozzles on there where they had to hook up the, like they was hooking up a washer. And I let the young lady hook up the washer, and I shouldn't have teased about it, said, "You're going to be one using this washer, so I'm going to let you hook up the washer hose." And that didn't go over too good with my wife, but it, but, you know, I'm just letting them know the things they need to know about pipe fitting and electricity. I got another board where they do electrical work, well, unhook the wires, let them hook them back up, and show them how to hook the wires up and wrap them around there. So it don't take a lot to teach kids things about a trade that you know. I know we got engineers in here and stuff. We can grab the kids and teach them a little something that then it'll help them out later so they won't be scared of these things when they have problems in their own home. All they got to do sometime, take a look and find out, maybe the wire just came loose, or maybe the bulb is bad. You know, and they can fix it themselves instead of calling out a repairman that's going to charge you $125 just to come out to your house and then charge you to do the work. So I'd like to thank you, young people, for coming out. Keep on doing what you're doing, and I guarantee these trades are going to pay off for you one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Oster.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for everybody coming out tonight. We have a nice crowd here in the chamber, so that's always good to see, and also for everybody watching at home. I know that people do watch, because I actually ran into a gentleman. He says, "I know who you are. I see you on TV." So, Mr. Coleman, thanks for coming out and giving us a little bit of an update tonight. As I'm in the city talking to folks, I just talked to a gentleman over the weekend. I do send people your way, because I said you never know what kind of programs they have going on over there, and he is looking for a little bit of roof assistance, so he's got kind of a hole in there. So thank you for coming out and letting us know what's always going on at CSC and for all of the work you do in the city. Saginaw Common Academy, thank you for coming out and sharing some of your things that you do with education. You're right in my neighborhood, you're only blocks away from my house, so that was really good to see some of the people that you're impacting in our city as well. And also for the folks that are here in STEM tonight, there was one thing that I got out of your presentation, that is exposure. So when I was young and I was your age, I did not know what I wanted to do. My dad was in skilled trades, and he kind of led me down that path, but I quickly had to get out of that because I told my dad, "I can't mill a block, so I'm going to starve." So I had to figure out something else to do with my career, but that led me into college. But if I would have known just a little bit earlier, one night before I got there, I wouldn't have taken some classes that I really didn't need before I finally found myself in computer science, which was my love, and then went into programming, and that's what I do, you know, 30 years later. So hats off to the program, and I'm glad you're exposing these kids. I can hear it when they're up here speaking at the podium. So a couple things extra, just, I got some time here. So Friday Night Live was a wrap. It was fun. Finally, I was able to get there with some of my council members and the mayor. Finally, I was able to get there with some of my council members and the mayor, Mayor Protem. Reggie stopped by, so it was good to see Councilman Lamar Sylvia there too, so that was just a really, Motown night is just always off the hook, and it was an excellent evening. Also, I do want to thank some of our staff again too. I was at the Southwest Neighborhood Association meeting over the week, last week, and they wanted me to extend their appreciation for how hard you worked to get, there was two homes down there, a lot of hurdles, but it was all but hugs in the room when I walked in, and we've gotten those roofs done for them, so they really do appreciate that. Looking at some of our local businesses here, I see that Cakes the Great's got a new flavor, so cheddar cheddar, so I'm kind of intrigued. If it's anything like the other cheese corn, that's excellent. And also too, just something else that's been going on in Facebook, the Savoy Restaurant is under new ownership. I was able to stop by there today. I know the owners, they have other businesses here in the city, but really looking forward to this coming back, because there are certain restaurants in the city and pubs that are more than just, it's a local establishment where people can go and hang out. So really looking forward, they're working hard to get it open, they're supposed to have a concert venue upstairs, and also they're gonna be bringing back recipes from other restaurants. They're bringing them back?
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Thank you for all our public speakers and for the youth that came up here. I know it's never an easy task to come up in front of people that you don't even know, but great job, guys. Thank you for the Saginaw Covenant Academy coming and talking a little bit more about what you guys do, because I know it's not a funeral home no more, so I know, you know, there's living people in that area there, so that's always a good thing. So yeah, just touch base and hit home, because I was once a young teenage mom too. Thank God I graduated early, but for those that have those obstacles in their life, it could be a barrier, so I'm glad that we have something like this that we offer for our youth here in the city of Saginaw, so I will be taking a look more into that. Also, for the STEM program, great job. I know that it's a demand thing moving forward, that a lot of the schools are teaching. I do have a cousin, she was the first Hispanic at U of M, and she's into the engineering. I don't know if it's mechanical or what, but she does the big semi, she's the supervisor, so she's a big wig, and I see her and she's so tiny, and she's running these men, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, this is awesome." So you know, it's great things, it's very important education, especially at a young age. I didn't know myself what I wanted to do. I wanted to be a lawyer, I wanted to do a teacher, and then, you know, but if I would have had some guidance, it probably would have steered me in the right path, but I know where I need to be now, and I'm where I'm at, and I'm self-employed, and I love it because I don't have to listen to nobody, I make my own hours and my own schedule. So that's always a good thing, you know. But yeah, it's always good to have good support and mentors around, so that's awesome. And thank you for Mr. Coleman coming to give us an update about CAC, one of my beginnings of my career. So I just want to say that this Friday, back-to-school food drive they're having, 10 to 12, bring your own boxes and bags, it sounds like, so if you're in the area. Also, if anybody's still in need, I know some of the schools haven't went back, a back-to-school party, August 28th at 6:00 PM, that's at the New Beginnings at 701 Hus Ave, Saginaw, Michigan. 6 o'clock, they're gonna have music, school supplies, clothes, and food, and I also am donating to the backpacks for that, and also I'll give a shout out to Terry Reed at Community Auto. He did a backpack giveaway yesterday in a customer appreciation, and I was able to go down there and just see all the kids getting their school supplies, it was really nice, and it was a really great turnout. And also this Wednesday, if they're still having it, I think the weather should be fine, light up the city, Saginaw Safe Celebration, this Wednesday, 5:30 PM at Ojivee Island. And last but not least, just want to give a birthday shout out to my brother, tomorrow's his birthday, so happy birthday to my brother, Big Mike Garcia. That's all I got. Thank you, guys, and have a good rest of your night.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy birthday to your brother. Go Lions, right? Right. We're gonna go to the Super Bowl this year, right? Cool. I hope everyone has a good Labor Day. It's an important holiday for me, right? I'm from the labor movement, for folks that are involved in that, you know, thank you for all the service that you've done for the community. MLive's doing a tour for the new high school, so if you go on their website, you can go ahead and do a virtual tour if you don't want to go there yourselves. It's pretty fascinating, so it's a really good article, go ahead and take a look at that. It's an exciting chapter in Saginaw history that we're gonna be starting this new high school. This is totally separate from STEM, but I also kind of, you know, want to include that after all the public comments today. The Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity allows for kids 16 to 20 to be able to get a training service fee. They have to kind of get their 1099 or get hired in by their employer, right? But it's $4.25 an hour. It's a little bit more than a slice of pizza at the end of your training, but it's something that you should definitely explore. So it's through the Michigan's Youth Employment Standards Act, that's also under the Fair Labor Standards Act, that you can research this, look into getting that. There's nothing quite like a paycheck to say that I've done something, that I brought something home, that I'm part of the community, that I'm part of the state and federal structure. Test the boundaries of that. I'm sure there's 10 different reasons why people that are in that type of business say, "You can't..." Well, there's a couple reasons why you can't, but there's a whole bunch of reasons why you can, so really test the boundaries of that. We had one ARPA applicant say that they wanted to pay their younger folks on commission. It's just, you can't do that, right? We actually have to pay our folks for wasting their time, and they're, not wasting, but spending their time wisely to learn new things. So real quick, if anybody has any information on Keishon Banks, Quan Lee Quaisman, there's Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Roy Whitson III, Cortez Hampton, Mazzy Rudderson, Jonathan Lamar Van, Ronald Pacico, Delance Stevens, Tezzy Thomas, Daquan Mims, Janelle Whittington, Darius Horison, Dennis Christopher's, and Jason Porterfield Jr. Please call 1-800-422-5245, that's Crime Stoppers, and then also the most recent shooting. Please call Crime Stoppers, 1-800-422-5245. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Now Reverend Roe didn't do it, but I'm gonna do it. G-O-O-D-E-V-E-N-I-N-G. Good evening. That is a part of the Freedom School chants. So, and you brought that back to my memory when I heard you speak today, and you didn't do it. I was like, "Oh, she's supposed to do it." It automatically happened to me. But I need to share, I got a parent on campus who I end up seeing, who noticed me from Freedom School, and they said they took their daughter birthday card shopping for their grandmother, and the daughter started picking up cards and started reading them to her mother. And she, the mom began to get emotional because the daughter said, "You know, Mom, I enjoy reading now. You know, I'm not afraid to read out loud." And you made me emotional because I was like, "Oh, they said that's what was gonna happen." And to hear from a parent that that's actually happening, I gotta tell you guys, thank you all for that. That was really great to hear, and just to hear everything that's going on from Saginaw STEM, seeing some of our Freedom School kids who are also in Saginaw STEM, seeing the first ward student triplets who are in Saginaw STEM, it's just amazing to see in the work. Even my boys just went to their first Saginaw STEM, and you know, I had to, what did they do, a boat or something? Something that had a little spinny thing, and I had to put that up for them because they kept turning on and turning off. But they left, they put it together, and they were excited about putting it together. So thank you all for that, and it was great to hear from our young people this evening. Thank you also to Saginaw CAC, Mr. Coleman, you are doing an amazing job, being at a church that's right up the street from CAC and seeing all of the activities. We were just in our family conference at our church, and you know, seeing what you all are doing, thank you for continuing the work for Saginaw CAC. Thank you for that. Even Saginaw Covenant Academy, you know, I support our charter, so thank you for advocating and doing the work to support our at-risk students, so thank you for all of that work. That's all I really have for this evening. Please pardon my tardiness, it was the first day of classes, so that means I'm putting out fires, and they wouldn't let me go, so please, City of Saginaw, pardon my tardiness because I was, and Jake, if I knew you were here, Jake is my suite mate on campus, I would have caught a ride from you. It'd have got me out on time. But again, thank you to our City of Saginaw, thank you to those that are watching, and thank you, Mayor Moore, for this time.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so very much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for attending your city council meeting. You could have been a lot of other places, especially with the heat, but I'd like to say thank you to everyone that came up and spoke today, special thanks to our youth, because I know it's not easy, it gets better and better as you go along. I'd like to say with the STEM program, we have been looking at your program, we might need some more information, but you already have been being looked at. Like to say thank you to Covenant, because I really had a misunderstanding what that was, and I'm so glad you came today. And I am one of those people that like to follow up and talk, so you all let me know who I need to follow up with, because I will knock on your door. Also, with STEM program, I'm calling or coming by, so always know that, always know that I'm gonna do that follow-up, and your programs just seem so excellent. So it's helping our youth, and anyone knows me, know I'm an advocate for our youth, have been for a very, very long time, so I definitely appreciate what all of you all are doing, and anyone that works with our youth. I'd like to say also that we have two grocery stores opening up in our community, and if you know anything about grocery stores in your community, you get a lot of different things when you have a grocery store. I didn't know that it was so much you get in regards to having a grocery store in your area. So in the Riverview Plaza, they're almost ready to open a new grocery store, and also what was formerly the Farewell Market on Farewell Street, Farewell, Farewell, I don't know what the name of that particular, either one of those are gonna be, or I wrote them down and I forgot. But anyway, those are two grocery stores that are getting ready to open up in our community, so kudos to them, definitely. Minister Coleman, thank you so much for your presentation. I always like to stop by anyway, so I kind of knew what was going on with a lot of stuff that they're doing over at CAC anyway. I was just there. Kudos to Kickball, Saginaw Kickball, it was a success, and now birthed out of that Kickball is a Special Needs Kickball, that was also a success this past weekend. Thank you all very much, have a blessed rest of the day.
Next, we have Mayor Protem Bench.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and hello to everyone here tonight. Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia, thank you for that information on the grocery stores, because the Farewell one is something I'm just learning about, and that's fantastic, but the one in Riverview Plaza, I believe it's Murray's. Does that sound right? Okay. I think that's the one, and she's correct. There's a lot of different federal types of funding and different benchmarks that, you know, different communities have to make, and a grocery store and the different types of quality of life amenities are things that they look at when they decide where money goes. So having these things happening here in Saginaw, like Councilman Oztash, you know, talked about, we hear about restaurants and different things opening in the township, and closing in the township, and the ebb and flow of those things, but we're seeing them here, right here in the city of Saginaw, and it's an amazing, amazing time, I think, to be, to be seeing these things. To Covenant Academy, thank you for being here. I had an idea of who you guys were, because I remember the search for a location when that occurred. I wasn't aware that you guys were working with our public school district to make sure that you're returning students where you can, and that's wonderful to hear, and thank you, and keep up the good work, meeting those, or filling that gap really, that for those kids who are falling through the cracks. To our STEM youth, wonderful job here tonight, congratulations on all that you've learned and all of the experiences that you've had, and just bravo for coming here and advocating for yourselves, because no one will speak, you know, speak more, better in your favor than you, you have no better advocate than yourself, so good job, guys. To Mr. Coleman at CAC, thank you for the update. I too rely on you a great deal, probably more than you'd like, when I deal with, you know, if there's a constituent who has an issue, if it's not a city-related thing or a county-related thing, nine times out of 10, I need to text or call Mr. Coleman, and he's there either helping or pointing me to where I need to go to find help, so I always appreciate hearing from him. And as Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia said, I just wanted to commend Chucky Lawrence and his outstanding turnout, beautiful event, third annual Kickball event, that just keeps growing every single year, and it's just a wonderful thing to see. And I do want to say too, congratulations to Friday Night Live, it was another wonderful season. I really wanted to thank Mayor Moore, because long before she was Mayor Moore, she was Councilwoman Moore, who was setting up a table and getting swag and making sure that our staff had Saginaw items to give out, because we are Saginaw proud, and we should show that off with pens and buttons and whatever we can when we're out there meeting and greeting our public, but more importantly, she's been doing this for so many years and facilitating it for us, that the community really has come to rely upon it, and they really look forward to seeing us there, so I just wanted to make sure that I thanked her, in addition to commending the positive results downtown crew for the wonderful things that they do. But thank you, that's all I have.
You know, I'm always the last one, so by the time it gets to me, it's boring and y'all don't wanna hear, but let me say this. Each program that spoke tonight, I know about you. I visit you. I know what you're doing. Now you let the world know what you're doing. If you don't come and speak out, you've got a nice crowd of people who actually watch this program, who watch us, and I think tonight that they were truly pleased with all of these young people, even the triplets over there. I keep telling them, they get quiet when I need them to talk, when I want them to talk, they quiet. If I want you to talk, you can hear them all over the room. And the young man that had the card, please let his mom know, he okay. He wasn't making no noise, he accidentally dropped his truck, and he wanted to get his truck, so now I know he was okay. Saginaw Academy, I don't know what to say. A covenant, I'm sorry, I don't know what to say about y'all. When I walked in the building and felt the atmosphere of these young mothers who had children, didn't have daycare, but they had the school. When I watched the teachers interact with them, it was 100. Deontay, don't shake your head, baby, because I seen you in action too. I've seen you in action with your children, I've seen you get down dirty and get down with them. The first time I came, you was cutting up a frog, and I'm like, "Okay, be a water, this is one..." You be amazed at the stuff that's happening in this city, but closed mouths don't get fed. Mr. Coleman, we ain't even gotta talk, you know, I know all about what's going on at the Saginaw Community Action Center. I need everybody to understand, we need you. We need you to tell us what you're doing. If you don't tell people, I heard two or three council people say tonight, "Oh, we didn't know you really did all of that." I'm like, "How long y'all been here?" Let me do this right quick, because my minutes are running out. Tomorrow at 5:00, the labors, labors, you heard Mr. Councilman Paul talk about labor force, they having a picnic. Please come. I need you to come eat the hot dogs up, bring the children. At the Saginaw Museum, Arch Museum on North Michigan, there will be music, food, fun, and it is open to the community, okay? I was gonna be in the dunk tank, but my doctor said no. No, he told me I'm too old for that now. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
It's gonna be hot. It ain't gonna be no dunk tank, don't care nobody, be hot.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so if any of you need to leave, it's a good opportunity.
Give me just take one minute, because you know, my city manager can clear room, y'all, so. You know, I love the devil, but if anybody would like to leave, this is the time, because we're gonna continue on our meeting. Thank you all so much for coming. Y'all come back tonight, you here? See, imagine you outdone yourself again.
And I was gonna recruit those kids to accounting, so.
Ask those babies to stay.
I know, it's the, so yeah, I think it's great, the STEM program's great, and it's any type of math-related, accounting, finance... The STEM program's great and it's, any, any type of math-related, accounting, finance, um, engineering are all high-demand jobs that there aren't enough people to fill. We've had a assistant city engineer position posted for about, going on two years, I think, that we haven't been able to fill. That civil engineering, it's a kind, one maybe overlooked sometimes. Um, accounting positions are always hard to fill. Finance positions, the water, uh, the, the scientific jobs at the water plan are always in high demand and they will be. I mean, they will be for the next 50 years. There's not a lot of people going into those programs. So it's a lot of opportunities out there, so it's great that the kids, uh, get exposed to that. Last meeting, we talked about the ARPA Home Rehab Program. And Councilman Copeland asked a question about how could we get to 1,000 households assisted with this program? Um, it's kind of a, a question that can vary based upon what we do. Um, roughly 317 more households would need to be helped. That number can change because currently we're doing some inspections and we're, we're doing some work on other homes. Um, but it's about $9,000 a home for furnaces and it's about $16,000 a home per roof. The furnace program is great because, um, it's a high need and we're going into fall and, uh, a lot of times we can, uh, leverage assistance from consumers. Energy, they helped us a lot the first go-around. We, we did additional furnaces that way. We did, um, hot water heaters. But, you know, any, range is anywhere from about 2.8 million to 4 million. Depends how much, uh, of each breakdown you wanted to do. Um, if you went down to fewer homes, obviously it'd be less money. Um, whatever your goal would happen to be, we can provide the, the numbers. For the amount of ARPA funds that are remaining, and I know, um, the youth group recently met to go over a lot of their programs still, so the groups are still working on that. Unallocated funds, we have 1.365 million left. Total, uh, with recaptured from a previous allocation is 1.656. So total 3.02 million. Uh, and that's in youth development, workforce development. So that's where we stand right now. I've, um, if you wanna put more money into, uh, roofs and furnaces, if you gave us an amount, we'll give you, we'll tell you approximately how many that would be, what type of breakdown that would be. If we did something like that, we would have to re, kind of restart the program and take applications again. Um, so we'd have to go through that process, but we have a template for it, so it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel with that one. And, um, we do have a presentation that we had. We were updating a couple of things in that, but, uh, a few, a few meetings back, we talked about one of the opioid settlements. So a lot of the focus in, a lot of local government that have been involved in the opioid settlements has been, uh, programs that relate to, um, impacting people once they are, have already been affected by opioids. Narcan distribution, first responder training, uh, drug identification equipment, those kind of expenditures. Um, if you know about our fire department, they are always interested in doing new things. Um, they've been very involved in the Narcan, or the, not just Narcan training, but response to opioid training. Our fire department responds to cardiac calls. So that's something we started out probably six, seven years ago. Um, a lot of those calls are misidentified and they, they end up being opioid-related overdose calls. So the fire department started, um, carrying Narcan for those events. So they've been looking into other ways. And Chief Hausbeck has a presentation here, uh, for a community engagement coordinator to work with the youth, so I'll hand it over to him.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, good evening. Uh, very, very happy to be in front of you tonight to present this. We think it could be a huge thing, huge positive for the city. Uh, as the city manager, uh, just said, you know, a lot of times, uh, programs and things that we've gotten into with the fire department have been reactive. Uh, one of the things that we really try to push is anytime we can find anything that is proactive, which is why a few years ago you saw us invest in getting a deputy fire marshal because that allowed us to get out, do more fire code enforcement, do more fire inspections, do more fire, um, outreach to try to prevent fires before they happen. Um, similarly, this position here, the community engagement coordinator, would hopefully be, uh, a way for us to get out there and be proactive to prevent, uh, these opioid-related deaths and injuries. Uh, I know it's come up in many meetings and we've heard you loud and clear about, you know, it's great that we have the Narcan, uh, out there. Uh, it's great that we're trying to get it widespread, but what are we doing to try to prevent the problem before it happens? So we hope that this will address that. Uh, so obviously the problem we're talking about, right, is, is the opioid addiction problems, um, that it's not just a problem in the city of Saginaw. It's a widespread problem. And I think that's very apparent by the, uh, national opioid settlement that was, uh, recently handed down to local municipalities, states, things like that. So what we're looking to do is, uh, bring a, a person aboard, uh, that would be this community engagement coordinator. And their sole job on a day-to-day basis as a 40-hour employee would be to be in the schools. Um, we identified grades six, seven, eight, nine, and 12 as being those critical, uh, ages and grades to get in front of these students and hopefully prevent, uh, these future, uh, misuses of, of chemicals. Uh, I am not an expert on opioids and opioid-related addiction, so this information came from the experts, uh, which you're gonna hear about here in a second. Uh, Dr. Botvin, who created the Botvin Life Skills Training, which is the curriculum that we're looking to utilize. Um, we also hope that another benefit would be for us to be able to get into the schools. Not only would we be presenting this curriculum and trying to prevent, uh, you know, drug addiction, drug use, and alcohol use and things of, of that nature, but also creating, um, almost like a, a mentorship with, we've seen some of it with the High School Fire Academy that we're doing, but this would take it to the next level to where there is a firefighter consistently in the schools, uh, very similar to what you see a lot of times in law enforcement with, uh, like outreach officers and things. Uh, this firefighter would be a trusted adult that these students could hopefully, uh, bond with, connect with. And also, we honestly hope that it could maybe even be a recruitment tool. You know, we just, uh, listened to some of the things about STEM. Firefighting falls under STEM. And, uh, we would really like to have these connections forged and grow our talent locally. And unfortunately, right now, the problem is, is that we do a lot of those things. We do the High School Academy, uh, we go to the schools. But those people doing that, the fire marshal, myself, the deputy fire marshal, our fire crews, they all have other things they have to accomplish throughout the day. This person would solely be dedicated to the schools. So that's the difference that we see. Um, so as you can see there, I already mentioned, you know, the big thing would be, uh, to be a presence in the schools and also to deliver, um, the Botvin Life Skills Training. Recruitment is also, uh, another, another thing that we would view as a benefit. So here's a little bit about the Botvin Life Skills Training. And you do have a flyer right in front of you, a nice one-page flyer that's kind of succinct and goes over briefly some of the, uh, benefits to it. But it is, uh, data-based, which is a huge thing for us. It is a proven curriculum. We didn't wanna choose something that was just fly-by-night, like, hey, we're gonna tell kids not to do drugs and they're gonna listen and it's gonna be great. We know that that doesn't work. So, uh, this curriculum, uh, is proven and that's what we're, we're hoping to, uh, get in front of these students. Uh, interestingly enough, something I wanna know, I don't believe it's in your paperwork, but there was a 2013 study done by Washington State University. And they found that for every dollar that was put towards life skills training, there was a $50 return. Uh, they saw that return in reduced, uh, corrections costs, reduced welfare and social services costs, reduced mental health treatment, and an increase in employment. So I can't guarantee to you that we're gonna see a 50 to 1 return, but again, that's data, that's positive. That's what I look to, to say, I really wanna give this a go. I think it could be a benefit for us. Uh, here's some data on a, uh, study that was done in 2014. So down in Florida, Indian River, they compared from 2010 when they, before they started, right before they started their life skills training to 2014, uh, where, where they had been in the program for four years. And you can see there, there was a 64% decrease related to alcohol use, 55% decrease with cigarettes and 29% with marijuana. So, uh, this life skills training is all-encompassing. It's not just about specifically opioid use. We're also hitting, uh, a lot of those things, uh, you know, the alcohol, the marijuana, a lot of things that can serve to derail, uh, youths in their future. The next screen also goes over, uh, some other attributes, some things that the life skills training is proven to assist with. So as you see there, uh, aggression, um, fighting issues, delinquency, those were also seen to be reduced in some of the studies that they, that they did. So I know it was pretty, pretty brief, but I also know that you all have a lot of work you've been doing and still have to do. So I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Yes, Councilman Copeland.
Um, thank you, Mayor Mark. My first question would be, um, how will this be integrated or will this be a pipeline for the DICE program?
Uh, good question. So the DICE program, uh, we, we've kind of transitioned a little bit. We still have it, but we've been able to, uh, with the High School Fire Academy, almost turn it into a year-round program. Uh, the summer, obviously the schools are out, so we don't do too much in the summer. But that, that is where, uh, we do bring in students one week during the summer, which is, uh, what you referred to with the DICE. But we've really tried to transition those kids into the High School Fire Academy because it, it keeps them around the fire department. It keeps them interested and intrigued as opposed to just a one-time event.
And I see that it's an online training, so the high school students who are in the program right now for the Firefighters High School program, this curriculum may be utilized in that program already? Or what, what would be the integration? If we, if we have some endeavors already going on, is there a way of us, instead of starting something new, if we already have a pipeline, integrate it into that program? Or will this be something totally new we're starting on?
So I will say, first of all, the nice thing is, is that there is a hybrid model, which is what you're referring to with the online and then in-person. There's also, uh, where you can do it just completely in-person. So we do have the flexibility. Uh, there is a train the trainer program. So really, in my mind, we would be all in-person. That way we, we keep that, that firefighter in front of them. Uh, but we do have some flexibility there. But yes, as you said, um, there is a lot of opportunity to mesh some of the programs that we already have going on, uh, with this, this program.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd say thank you for your presentation. I've got a few questions. So, uh, as I'm looking at, um, the community engagement coordinator, um, does that person also have to be a firefighter?
So they would not. Uh, what we're initially looking at is we're trying to fill it with a firefighter. Uh, reason being, I don't have to tell you that obviously we have budget constraints, right? And, um, of course, every department in the city, I'm sure, could tell you they could use more people, right? So I view this as an opportunity to where if this person is trained as a firefighter, they're now available to us, uh, when we have those large structure fires where we have to call people in from off-duty, we call those callbacks. Uh, so now that's another body that I can utilize. Also, during the day, you know, they wouldn't be utilized for our everyday run-of-the-mill house fire, but if we have a large commercial building in Old Town or something, those large, uh, conflagrations, so to speak, that would be another body that we could pull in an emergency.
And also, um, I see you looking at grade six, seven, eight, nine. You're missing 10 and 11. Uh, I'd like to know why that is. And, um, I, I understand where you got your statistics from to start at this particular grade level, but, um, as a, uh, prevention coordinator myself, I've always been taught in elementary schools where you start with, with the, you know, because a lot of times at this age, and not being contrary at all, but a lot of times at this age, they've already, a lot of have experienced, uh, drugs in some form, or they are around drugs in some form in the family. So if you can just kind of elaborate a little bit, why not the, uh, elementary age? And why are you leaving 10th and 11th graders out?
Excellent questions. Uh, so initially, when I went down the road of looking at the curriculums and whatnot, uh, we spoke with public schools to get a, a number of how many students are we talking? And when I started doing the math, uh, initially my thought was we're gonna do the whole Botvin Life Skills Program. So they have an elementary module because as you said, it's very important, uh, to get that age group. Then they have the middle school module. Then they have the high school module, which is, uh, for ninth graders. And then they have what they call the transitions module, which is for the 12th graders, for seniors who are about to transition into the workforce, college, adulthood. Uh, the issue was when I tried to incorporate, uh, because really we're missing the elementary aspect. And there just wasn't physically enough time to hit all the students. Um, I would have loved to have been able to do it. Um, another issue, of course, would be cost. So there is a cost for all the materials, right? Um, but I think we could have managed our way around that. The main issue was time. There just physically wasn't enough time. I'm probably being very, um, how do I put this? The, this person's gonna be very busy. Uh, they're not gonna have a lot of time. So we're talking for six, seven, eight, nine, and 12th grade, that's 2,100 students. So, uh, the, the middle school module, you're supposed to be in the classroom 15 separate times, one-hour sessions, and 10, uh, 10 one-hour sessions for the ninth grade and the 12th grade. So when you start doing the math, 40-hour work week, they're gonna be busy. Um, so that's really the reason why. Uh, and I spoke with the Vice President of Botvin, uh, this morning and he did reassure me because I explained this, this issue, right, of not being able to fit every single grade in. He said that the middle school for, for their research and what they've seen is the number one most critical. So if someone comes to them and says, I can't do elementary, middle, and high school, they recommend the middle if they can only do one. So that's where, where we put the, the emphasis.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm gonna piggyback that, and I'm gonna piggyback that because of my tenure as a air officer. Mine, pretty much my entire career's been drug intervention with the Saginaw Police Department. And one of the things, the DARE program is a failed program in many communities simply because it's not ran the way it was intended, and that's K through 12. Um, for us, we, we focused in on middle school, which, like I said, it's no longer around. Um, so I would stress really to do more research because I, what we found was that if you hit the elementary, you hit elementary, you're gonna have more success than just focusing on middle school because like Councilwoman just said, yeah, by middle school time, I wanna be fair, fair to schools, but by middle school time, it's almost like you're handing over the kids to the police or firefighters or those mentors that come in to help because you don't want to handle what's being, what you're getting every day. So we, we get the, I, and we get the troubled, we get the high risk, we get that because it's being pushed over. But the focus definitely needs to start at a younger age in order to have a greater impact. And if you can go for the middle school and high school after that, then great. So I, I would stress a little bit more research as far as where to hit because that middle school ground, I'm telling you, it's, I, I would hate to see this program end up like the DARE program. I would like to see it sustained and maintained for years to come because it's having a great impact on our community.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Florid.
Thank you, Mayor. So with this program, it's substance abuse and violence prevention, correct?
Yes.
And is the, what's the correlation between the two according to this Botvin?
Dr. Botvin. So they're teaching life skills training, uh, as a whole. And so, uh, I believe one of the slides had it, but basically there's three, um, three areas of focus that they're looking at. Um, they're not just trying to deliver to the students, you know, don't do drugs. They're trying to be all-encompassing as far as healthy habits, uh, good decision-making, ways to identify peer pressure and hopefully avoid it. And so what they have found through, um, like I said, I think they've done 30 studies on their, their program, is that that is a better way to, um, be all-encompassing and, and get the responses that we're looking for instead of just, you know, don't do drugs because I said to, type of thing.
I, I'm just asking about the violence prevention part of it, not the drug part of it. I'm asking why that's a large part of this program versus just a drug, don't do drugs program. You know what I mean? There could be life skill. There could be life skills, but not necessarily "Don't hit somebody or shoot somebody," right?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I, I mean, I wish, I wish that they were here to answer that question. From what they've told me is that, again, it's an all-encompassing curriculum to where they're trying to teach the, the decision-making, things like that. And so naturally, it's also going to bleed into these other areas, right? So making good decisions about how to control your temper, how to avoid situations, uh, you know, maybe previously you were getting in fights at school. Well, they're gonna try to teach you ways to make these better decisions, to avoid these high-risk and high, potentially high injury situations.
Okay. Thank you, that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Cochrane, you're about to suffocate.
Um, and it just sparked when we were discussing the, the curriculum. Now, I was trying to find, based on what was provided, the representation of their schools. So this would be in Saginaw Public?
Correct.
Okay. So is the curriculum culturally relevant? Do have, they have experience that look like our, and I think seeing the diagram from Covenant Academy, seeing how like their breakdown of, and our Saginaw Public is culturally diverse, will that curriculum speak to the Saginaw Public school population?
So yes, and that was one of my concerns. Uh, I didn't include that graph because the data was a little bit older.
Okay.
And so I didn't want that to be an issue. But they did rest assured, and that's what that graph showed, was that it's been tested on Caucasian and minority groups, uh, both in lower-income poverty situations and also, you know, higher-income areas.
See if you can get that data from them.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes, Councilman Ball.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to commend you on putting this program in our community. I have talked to a couple of educators, and they crazy about this Botvin skills, the things that they instill in the children and stuff like that. Because we have a lot of single-parent homes, and a lot of times, most of my mothers, and they don't have, you know, somebody to teach these kids all the time. You know, the mother's trying to make sure they got their meals, fed meals, and trying to go to work. And sometimes the kids just don't get the training that they need at home. So it's good that we got there, at least we can start planting some seeds, you know, and hopefully it starts sprouting, you know? Doing the programs you're doing, Saginaw STEM, the more we engage our children in doing good things, the more good things they will do. So I appreciate the fact you guys are doing this. I wish that we had other departments in our, uh, in the city that would do things that you're doing about trying to get firefighters, you know, in the fire department. You know, maybe the, uh, the accounting department could do maybe the same thing, to go in and talk to our kids.
You mean me?
Yes, sir.
Think I am the accounting department?
Just, just a thought, you don't have to respond to it. I'm just saying this. I think we can do this in other departments to bring up and raise them up. I know if I can, uh, raise a master plumber in my household, because I'm a pipe fitter, then maybe everybody can do things in the summer in nature to raise our kids up. Thank you.
I'd like to see, you said Saginaw Pub, I, you know what? I'm not in competition with Public or Charter or any of them. I think that this should be open to children. I mean, I need you to think about that. Because when you limit who we wanna help, that's not helping the community. So I, I really want you guys to think about children. Take out Public, take out Charter, take out Catholic. Any child who wants to be a part, or parents wanting to be a part, I think that we should allow them that opportunity.
Mike, just to address that really quick, my concern is, again, we, like, we don't wanna water down the program, and we already had to look at cutting out one module, so to speak, just because of time. And so my concern is now if we're adding even more students, that's why we looked at just Public, because, um, we can, we can barely make this work time-wise. Obviously, if we had more people, then hey, let's do it all. But we can certainly look at, you know, are there creative things we can do to try to?
Well, my, my thing is this, in the event, like so many other things, walls get dropped. And the, the, the adults don't get hurt, it's the kids. And so I'm saying, open it up, and you know what? We'll fund some money, trust me.
Well, and, um, you know, I would really commend Chief Houseback in the fire department, because this, this is adding a position.
I know.
So, and what we were looking to do is fund it through these opioid settlements. And, and the general fund too, because one thing that we talked about is, um, you know, we did talk about the dare program, as Councilman Williams said. But we do have issues sometimes too with connecting with the youth in schools, and maybe they can't connect as well to police officers. Firefighters seem to have a good ability with connecting to youth.
Yeah, they do.
And, um, so we thought that was a good bonus for this, but also, they can teach fire safety to kids too. You know, getting in there and teaching them about that and having a plan for their house, so that, that's one thing there. But I think it's a good start, you know, starting in the public schools. We're happy to partner with anybody, you know, if, if the schools wanna add a position to, or, you know, if they wanna work with the fire department, work in some of the other schools, private, we're happy to work with them. I'm sure the fire department would be willing to do that. With the amount of new programs that they've been working on, they really do wanna get youth more involved in fire service and interested in working in the city. That's an ancillary goal here, where we wanna get our youth interested in working in our fire department. You know, we're not even getting city residents applying for the fire service. Maybe one applicant when we do a testing. So that, that's kind of another effect of that, can we get the fire department in there and have them work with the kids? But I think this is a good start. It's out of the box, not something that we've done before. But it is somewhat similar and a different topic, but, uh, years ago, the fire marshal did a lot of outreach, a lot more in schools. So we kind of may, we kinda had to pivot that back to what is a fire marshal supposed to do? And that's fire inspections, fire safety, things like that. But this is another way, okay, let's get back in there and do that outreach, especially with the youth. So I think it's a, a, a really good start, and it addresses something that the council was asking about. If, if you guys can have a consensus there, we'll, we'll move forward if we have to look at the, you know, elementary module. That's something we can do.
I see, yeah, my master. I'm sorry. Look, I don't know. I don't know who had the hand up first. So Councilwoman Sylvia, we'll just do it and come down, please.
Okay, thank you so very much, Mayor. You keep referring back to time. Can you please expound on what do you mean about the time?
Yeah, so when we look at, again, the 15 modules that are required for the middle school, the 10 modules that are required for the, whether you're in the high school for the ninth graders or the transitions for the 12th graders. And when you split it down, because we're only gonna have one person in this position. So, uh, they're gonna have to get into each classroom to do each hour-long session. And, uh, when you do the math, this is a full schedule if this person's working a 40-hour work week. So that's where, unfortunately, like I said, we had to, to cut somewhere, which is why we cut out the elementary. But that's, you know, you bring up valid points. So maybe we look to cut the ninth and 12th grade instead and get, you know, more towards the front. I'm certainly open to that.
Yeah, that, that, I mean, you wanna make it count, you know? And so I'm just thinking about my training and what I know, and thinking about Saginaw. Elementary, if you go back and, you know, do some things that would seem like so feasible, and actually making it count. Thank you again.
Yes, Councilman.
Again, with the time and something that Mr. Morales just said, as far as partnering with the schools. I think that's a great idea, uh, because, again, me mentioning about me being a dare instructor, I was part of a dare team, um, because you just stated that going in, doing those hour sessions, it, we just briefly talked about burnout. Uh, because if you have one person doing that and they're hitting, um, however many classes during the week, plus whatever else the fire department is gonna, yeah, that burnout is gonna be there. So the collaboration would be great if the school district can provide a couple people, and they're all on the same, teaching the same, uh, curriculum going in, that would be wonderful.
And that's a great point, because Botvin does allow that. So if they had, if the school district was to identify a few individuals who wanted to participate with it, they could go through the train the trainer program and assist, yep.
Hey, check with the hospitals too, maybe they have somebody who wanna worry.
We do, we do do a lot of collaboration with Covenant's Injury, Injury Prevention Coordinator. Uh, so that is definitely an angle that we could look at as well.
Check with Department of Corrections, Juvenile. Juvenile system may have some people that wanna get involved. Yes, yes, Mayor Prochey.
I just wanted to say thank you for putting this together and invite you back to the liaison committee, if that would be beneficial to you, to come and have a conversation with the city school liaison committee. I can, I don't have the next date off the top of my head, but I can certainly send it to you and make sure that you're aware of when we're meeting. And just to echo what Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia and Councilman Williams said, um, I was a dare student in fourth grade, so, I mean, even younger than that, I, I would concur, 'cause it was, you know, definitely a fun experience at the time, but I don't know what impact it really had on any of the kids in our grade. But we were, we were even younger, so I would agree with that. But great job, great spot, or place to start.
Thank you.
Last question. So last meeting, we approved 1.7 million dollars to those two community organizations regarding, um, prevention. Would something, would this curriculum fall, now I'm thinking about partnership. We already got 1.7 million dollars that we've given to two community organizations. Will they also, is this a partnership? Chief, and you all, have you all discussed that, see how we can use those dollars that we've already received and allocated to support our chief here?
I'm, I'm always happy to partner with anyone who wants to come to the table, as long as, uh, our motives are the same, which is to better the city, better the residents. I'm happy to do it.
Thank you. I would encourage, I don't know if that's a director city staff, or how do we get that going? Were those, that's 900,000, if that was allocated last meeting, that can really support this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any more questions? The presentation is well overdue. The new season is here. Fresh anointing has already hit the city, so we're going to move forward.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. That concludes the management update.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just need to publicly say thank you to our manager and Mr. Kawat. Your actions after our last meeting and getting me that information as soon as possible, I wanna say thank you for that. Um, to know that you all heard it, took action, and actually gave me some timelines on when we can get that accomplished. I appreciate that from you both, um, and your staff. And then also, when you were sharing about the presentation earlier about the available dollars, if we were to, and again, this is not my money to allocate, and I'm supporting whatever my colleagues bring forward, but if we were to move some of that money, would that also decrease the funds that we will be charged by Guidewell due to our CB?
TG Black.
It's Community Black Development, right?
Black community development block.
Oh, I always switch those two. Would we end up saving money with Guidewell if we were to do some, at least some dollars there?
So if you did the rehab program, yeah, that, it doesn't require monitoring, right, Yolanda? Because it's already established program.
Well, Guidewell is being paid through ARPA interest, so it wouldn't affect them at all, but...
Yeah, but they wouldn't have to monitor that program, I think is the point.
Any other question? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you for the presentation and everything. Um, I just wanted to know in regards to, uh, what can be done in regards to the grass and weeds and, uh, the land bank of how many feet they go? What can be done? Because we've had several crimes, we've had murder, where people have hid in the bushes. The bushes are so high, they only go back X amount of feet. I'm wondering what can be done to get the, some of these lots cleared? Because you have in some neighborhoods, the whole neighborhood is overgrown. And, uh, after information that, uh, we received on last week, and, you know, just down through the years, different crimes and bodies being found in these overgrown weeds, just seems like, uh, we as a city, uh, working with, uh, in conjunction with the land bank, maybe we can sit down, or someone can sit down, and find out a way to alleviate some, some of this, because it's terrible, and it's terrible in certain neighborhoods.
So there are a lot of different strategies that you can take. When we did a lot of the demolitions, we started working with Saginaw Valley State University for their crime mapping and geographic. And there, we did see correlation in reducing blighted homes and reduction in crime. That was one of the requirements we had to do with some of the money that Congressman Kilde gave. So when we did that, one of the things that we did look at, I think, with strategic demolition, was working with law enforcement on line of sight and different things like that. So that might be a way to look at some of the lots, if, if there are issues like that, where that is impacting crime, the height. So where are strategic places that we could do that? Um, because with the number of lots citywide, you're not gonna be able to go through and, and mow all of those lots. I think we looked at it, you, you know, seven, eight years ago. You could get through all of those lots one time with the number of staff we have. And I think even looking at it two times was millions and millions of dollars for mowing. But there might be a way to look at it strategically with clearing that and, and looking at alternatives. We've tried a number of alternatives where, where you look at low-growth things. But maybe we can work with law enforcement and say, hey, which ones would be strategically, strategic lots where we could do that, or areas and cut it and do some kind of low cover? We partnered with Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy before doing some of that work. So it's definitely something that we can look at.
And can we look at some partnerships, or, you know? That would, that would help. And like, one of my big concerns are that, you know, it's, it's like in certain areas, you know? And we are not, you know, we are, we don't have our hand in the sand. We know a lot of, a lot of this is on the east side of the city, you know, the north side, just horrible. I mean, it's all over. But in those particular areas, you can, you know, when people come to city council talking about the deer and the goat, I don't think they said goats. I just added that. But you know, the, the wildlife, you know? So if you... Okay. If you have the wildlife there, you know, it, a, a lot of people, criminals, you know, they see an area and they zone in on that, you know? So, you know, as far as the crime and stuff, so thank you very much.
Yep, definitely look at that.
So now we got goats with the knives and tires and gears, oh my God. Oh, my God. Okay, um... Any other questions? Good night, young people.
Keep up the good work, y'all.
Thanks, y'all. All right.
Okay, Mr. Manager. He said he was all through, no other questions for our city manager, Madam Clerk.
Takes us to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available on, at City Hall and on, and on the webpage, and also on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Do I have any exceptions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Committee reports.
Do we have any reports? Hearing, uh, Madam Clerk.
On to appointment of board commission and committee members. We have one, it's to approve the city manager appointment of Mason Sarosi to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2027.
I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved as support, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our next item is ordinance adoption. The first on the agenda is to amend section 153.021 definitions in sections 153.226, principal permitted uses, 153.426, uses and parking standards, and by adding a new section titled, short-term rentals. By adding sections 153.651, title, 153.652, purpose, 153.653, definitions, 153.654, short-term rental unit general provisions, 153.655, short-term rental unit license and fees, 153.656, short-term rental unit requirements, and 153.657, prohibited acts and penalties of chapter 153 zoning code of title 15, land usage of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
That was a mouthful.
Yeah, I want her to explain all those too.
I need, I need, I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
I know you was just joking. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
The next ordinance is to amend section 153.003 definitions in section 153.111 definitions of chapter 151, property maintenance code of title 15, land usage of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
I need a motion to adopt.
Support.
So moved.
It's been moved as support, any discussion? Hearing and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at resolutions. We have one, it's authorizing sponsors of specified community events to use amplifying equipment.
Need, need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Takes us to miscellaneous business. Our first item is consideration of a FOIA appeal submitted by Matthew Schenk.
I need a motion to issue a written notice upon the partial disclosure denial.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
It's been moved as second, any discussion? Yes.
As I, as I read this particular information, I'm wondering why it's being brought to council? Simply because if you don't have information, why are we voting on something that isn't there? It's like, they're asking for information, but we don't have the information. So why is it being brought to council if there's no information to be given? You know, I was confused about that.
Under the Freedom of Information Act, anytime there's any form of a denial, whether it's because we took a redaction of information or because we denied it because the information does not exist, the person who made the request has appeal rights. We have to inform them of their appeal rights, they get the right to take that appeal. That's where we're at. So we have to by law consider this appeal.
So, but there's nothing there. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other question? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it upholding the partial disclosure denial means there's nothing there? Is there some redacted stuff that we don't want to?
It means that the original response was a denial in part. We provided numerous records, over a hundred different documents were provided pursuant to the request for information that was in the city's possession. However, a portion of the request was denied because there, there were records requested that are not in the city's possession and that's the part we denied.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Our next item is consideration of a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation in James versus City of Saginaw for MCL 15.268.
I need a motion. And I also want to call the roll call vote, so I need a motion. It's been moved as support, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Balls.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bench.
Yes.
Councilmember Astash.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
And Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Closed session at 8:25.
I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Court.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay. So I did that already, motion go, okay. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the legal recommendation as discussed in closed session regarding the James pending litigation.
Support.
It's been moved as support. No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Now, I need a motion. Don't do that. I need a motion for John.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Retract. Under miscellaneous, Councilman Flores had something he wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, a motion to allocate ARPA funds to women of color in the amount of $63,000 for eligible capital expenses from the workforce development program.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
I, I know for myself, I had the conversation about having some matching funds and I can go on record, in my conversation, I did share that when we came up with the food insecurity budget, we said if we are going to allocate money towards building projects, we at least wanted to see that there are some matching funds because it has to be sustainable afterwards. I shared that with Ms. McGovern and so that is going to be the same way that I'm voting today is I am looking for that information to see if there is some matching dollars to match it support. Because she provided us more things that are needed. And so I don't want us to just give this and she still needs funds. If we can support her in finding those matching dollars, it would be better for us to say, hey, they have matching dollars, we are giving this because we know they're going to be sustained once we're done with ARPA.
I had a conversation with Ms. McGovern. The main issue, the other amounts that she was requesting were on top of, the main priority is the roof being able to be fixed. So for those of us that have visited that facility and had read through the other allocations that had been requested, that facility cannot be opened unless those, that roof is taken care of. And we're getting into a season where there's going to be additional storms and then we're going to move into a season where there's going to be the inability to, to take care of that roof. From my understanding, this would be the last allocation. They've been an organization that has been self-sustaining for some time. The original request was $343,000. They only came back to council each time because we had shortened the amount. The original allocation was $200,000 and then we had given the money on top of that. This would, this amount right now would be equal to the amount that they originally asked for. So if we're looking at it, at a place of public of why do they keep coming back? It's because we never gave them the original amount in the first place. So that's where I'm at with it. I think it's a good investment and we'll be able to close this allocation up.
So let me say this. Everybody puts in for allocation. And so I guess I'm lost because you said because we didn't give them. That's not how this works unless I miss something. Because you asked for something, you get it. I, I, you know what, I'm like Councilman Copeland on this one. Can we find some match dollars? Is there some match dollars? What else can we do to help? We still got people who we haven't even touched at all. I remember the second allocation we did was because it needed to be done right then. And I understand, Ruth, don't, please, I understand all of that. But I just got a problem with us just going to one source all the time. Can we find, can we help find? I mean, I, I don't know what to say, but I, I take, I take real offense to we, they asked for this and we didn't give it. I know a whole lot of people ask for stuff and we didn't give them that either. So I think that for me, I'm, I, I have to go in the boat where I'd like to see some match dollars come up now. Okay, because we, we actually, the day that we voted, we voted to help them get into their new place. I don't know how they got there and then now we need roof, we need all this other stuff. But however, I just believe, they've been around long enough. They're, they're, they're raising funds and, and talking to some people. I'm sure Ms. Evelyn is capable of doing all of that one. So I, I, I just, I mean, I resent the fact that you say, Councilman Flores, that they asked for this and we didn't give to them. So a bunch of people ask for money, we didn't give to them either. That don't make us bad. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not saying anybody is bad, okay? I'm speaking about what the original request was for and what they're asking for. And this is below the asking amount that they had originally put in a couple of weeks ago. So if we're doing a full, grounded understanding of everybody that's already been given dollars can go and find their own dollars, match those moving forward. That's something that I hope that the council will continue with other organizations that have come back and asked for additional dollars as well.
And I guess I should, I should make mention that and clarify, I said council, Mayor Protem and I. That was one of the decisions that we made. And so that is also one of the reasons why if there were other programs that came before us, I did not vote for them solely because, as our mayor stated, we still have organizations who never received anything. And we've already received something in our email about some other programs. I, I'm going to go back and say, anything that we do from this point forward, we're starting a precedent, it's going to be a precedent. And so I voted yesterday, any other organization that comes before us that we've already given money to, we won't be able to have much conversation on it because they're going to use the same thing. Well, y'all didn't give us what we asked for. So I think I get it and at this point, whatever workforce wants, want to do with y'all money, go ahead and do it because I'm standing behind, let's just give this money now to our homes if need be. Let's give it to some, because this is, we're constantly going back and forth. But however you all want to allocate your money, we're going to have to support it because this is the only thing you guys have brought to us, so.
Yes.
Again, this is not the only thing that we brought to you, right? But I want to continue with going with facts here. That Women of Colors is not the only organization that we have ever brought to you. We brought YDC, which had to be brought back and returned. We brought Come Out Stay Out with Women of Color. And then that got transferred over to a different program. So that had to be brought back. There seems to be a continuous issue with bringing this money forward from workforce development. A thousand homes would be great. A thousand homes is an arbitrary number nonetheless. It's aspirational absolutely. That money can be used from the interest that was occurred. So we're still, council had originally requested that we get X amount from workforce development. Women of Colors helps people get jobs, they prepare them for the workforce. It's getting to a place where we're running out of options and I've talked about this for months now. I don't see the issue with allocating money for them to move in, open up business, get started and be done with it and actualize the amount that they actually asked for in the beginning. So I want council to kind of reflect on our system and how we got here in the first place and hopefully close this out. It's a good cause, it's not a bad organization. It's a great organization, they've done great work, they've put themselves into the portal correctly. So I just don't see the issue anymore.
Mayor Moore, just before we go public, we're not, there's not an issue. And I, and I think it stems all the way back from all of our previous conversations. We have stated words that made it sound emotional, but I believe from all of my colleagues, it has been a process. It's not been emotional, it's not questioning integrity. In, in the examples that you provided, it came down to the work of a committee that should have been done before it came to council. And these are things that our city staff found out after it was brought to our city, our city council. So I don't want to be said that we're, it's becoming personal. We are going to, we're going to do whatever we want, whatever you guys need to do. But I, as a councilman, will ask, what is the next step for the remaining dollars from workforce? Because you brought us the MAC, you brought us the two other programs which did not pass. Now we're doing Women of Colors, Women of Colors now will be done. What will be the remaining programs from what you all have that we need to vote on? So I will support this, if that is what we're saying, we're done with Women of Colors, we're approving them. My only follow-up would just be, as my follow-up has been with the U Development, what is the next steps of what we need to do before we turn off this year? Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Mayor Protem.
I would just say that I, I agree with George when we're dealing with agencies that have come back more than once, that I think having matching dollars and some sort of assurance that just because council says that, you know, this is the last allocation doesn't mean that they're going to be viable going forward without or after that, that allocation. So, and I would say as far as the, the original request not, you know, falling short and that's why they have to keep coming back and asking. I mean, the original allocation wasn't to purchase a building. It was strictly for programming, which we obliged and changed. And, you know, I think a lot of the information that came at us about the purchase of the building or a purchase of any building was, you know, later stage and something that we were kind of learning as we were going. But I personally would like to see matching funds because I, or at least some sort of match because I've gotten a call from another agency and I know they're going through their own internal request process and what they decide to come back to council for. But we have other agencies that we've allocated to more than once that are also in the same position where what we gave them isn't enough. And they're not, you know, potentially able to finish their work either, so. It's my two cents.
Any other questions?
I'd like to call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
At your pleasure.
Yeah.
I, I think that was the vote on the call for the vote. Because we had a motion and second.
I was voting for the call for the vote, say call for the vote.
They called for the vote, I thought she was taking the vote.
Okay, so that was called for the vote. It was moved as second, we're calling for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Are we reading the motion and then we're voting on that?
She's getting ready to read the motion to us right now, ma'am.
It is to allocate ARPA funds in the amount of 63,000 for capital expenses from workforce development to women of colors.
Did everybody hear that?
Do you get a second on that?
The servants, yeah, we got a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
No.
Nay.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Balls.
No.
Mayor Protem Bench.
No.
Councilmember Astash.
Nay.
Councilmember Garcia.
No.
Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland.
No.
And Mayor Moore.
No.
You have two yes and seven no.
We still have a motion and a second to adjourn on the table, that was never presented.
Do we have a problem?
No.
No, Mayor Moore. No, Mayor Moore.
Now I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.